City Council. A to order for the record today is Monday, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We are in the City Hall Auditorium. We do have a quorum participating in person. Here in the auditorium are Councilwoman Hona, Councilman Manichia, Councilman Cavanero, participating via Zoom. I have Councilman Waldron and Councilman Oliver. We'll move into item number one. I will entertain a motion to. Yeah, yeah, sorry. Somebody throws me. Okay. Now, item number one, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section four E of the City Council WPCA meeting rules of procedure. Thank you, Councilman Cavanero. Second by Councilman Manichia. All in favor? We are open to the public. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the council this evening? Mr. Mootis.
Good evening, Council. How are you today, tonight? Everybody's happy. I see that. That's great. I'm happy too, because I haven't been here in quite a while. Mrs. Mrs. Carbone knows that well, that I've been gone for a while, but things are getting better for me, not so good for the other half. But everything is working out. Our daughter's taken care of her. She moved in and everything is doing good. I moved out. But anyhow, the reason why I'm here tonight is I live in Colchester. All right, I got a place that my daughters, one of my daughters got a place down there, twenty-three acres. I bought a camper from my other daughter. I moved it down there. And right now, I do a lot of work back here part-time. I got some walls to do. I work with a plumbing and heating guy. And I do the cottage up there and up by the corner wall by the bridge up there. There's a private lake. I do some cottage up there, do some cottage work up there for the guy. So I'm trying to get back here and I've been checking a few campgrounds to see if you can, if I can get in because sixty miles one way. And that's a good hour ride in the morning, but you gotta get, you gotta get on eighty-four and on Route two before six o'clock. Otherwise, the traffic is three lanes wide, bumper to bumper, and you've got a lot of weirdos. I mean, they cut in front of you in and out, and you have to look in your mirror, your rearview mirror, the sides, and they just come right up. And if there's a space in front of you, they'll shoot right across. Unbelievable. And I almost got T-boned like that. So basically, that was, that's that. But this is what I'm here for. I can say I do a lot of work here with a contractor here on plumbing and heating and stuff, so on and so forth. But I do, and I'm going to specify very badly, I think we gotta change some heads in the City Hall. Not so much in the council, but I think engineering, I'm not going to mention any names because I don't want to frustrate anybody, but there's a few things that they should go. And I don't think they know good, like the roads that are here. I drive a lot of times down Riverside, Prospect, a lot of places there coming through. Not so much where they paved East Main here in Main Street a little bit. But what I'm upset about is, and I'm really blown up about it. Every time I go down the road, I say, when I get back, I'm gonna make that meeting Monday night and I'm gonna be there because I'm gonna put my foot down and I'm gonna complain and I'm gonna complain. Those roads are bad. I don't care. They've been like that for so long. And the gas company, those are the worst. Wherever they, I mean, let's put it to you this way. I just hope, I just hope after they pave Riverside or Prospect Street, I hope somebody up here got some sense not to come through and make another cut across the new pavement that they just put in. And that's what's gonna happen. I guarantee it. I guarantee it. It's not right. The manholes, I can't, I can't stress that enough neither. They don't know how to pave. Manholes, when you go through there. It shouldn't be that way. Smooth, baby, smooth. It's not right. I just can't, I just can't express that enough about that. And it's terrible. And there's a few other roads around town here that are very bad. And I'm gonna be, I'm still, even though I'm a Colchester, not a resident, but I live there. But I still have ties in Torrington. And as far as me, I'll be always a Torrington person regardless, one way or the other. And, and the other thing is, I hope that Eleanor Carbone runs another term if she can. I hope we gotta keep Republicans in tune because I, I don't have anything bad about the Democrats that were on a council meeting. But I do have places like other states, like our president. And the gas prices and not as, not as assured as a baby formula. Can you believe that? It's just totally one thing after the other. I just can't get, you know. But hey, I'm over seventy and going strong and hey, I'm gonna go into the day and my day and die and, you know, my, whatever it takes. She's new. I don't see, never seen her before. She got a pretty smile, though. Anyway, I see her smiling up there. I don't know which, who she is. She must have took the other guy's job.
So.
Yeah. And Mrs. Ruas, she's still here?
She is, yes. She's.
Oh, yeah, there's my friend there. Yeah. How you doing?
So I do have to remind you, we do have the time limit and you've, you've. No, you're right there. And that's why I'm gonna ask you to wrap this up.
One more thing.
Yes.
I see on East Main, they're starting to do the concrete sidewalks, the handicap ramps and sidewalks. But I just hope they do more of East Main. You know, I don't know if they're doing both sides or just the one side. Because part of East Main is both sides, and then it just goes to one, and then there's none. So I don't know. But I do think there's gotta be some heads rolling in that engineering department. They need new blood, or they gotta have somebody in there that, that knows the roads. I mean, these side streets that the people just live there, they got a nice drive, they got a nice road to drive down. But you, where the main problem, main people drive every day, it's terrible. I mean, terrible. I mean, everything shakes.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate your insight.
All right. Thank you. Enjoy.
Hope you're enjoying your new home.
Hey, it's you. Yes, I'm back.
You're back. He's back. He's back. He did hurt my feelings by not voting Democratic. We'll, we'll have a talk on that later. Just wanted to bring up the issue of drug, drug recognition experts. It's on the agenda. Just, I see Chief Baldwin's here. If we could have a robust explanation of the cost to recreational cannabis for our city, what these types of contracts, what other types of things maybe come down the track to, for our city by adopting recreational cannabis. So just a little concern there. Is it, do we need this kind of MOU if we, you know, has been around for decades? And is it the fact that we're now making it legally available? Do we have to have more things like this in place? So just wanted to ask that, that we have that in-depth discussion and prod out of that a little bit just for public knowledge. So that, that's my one big question. I want to thank President Biden for everything he did during the pandemic to help our city and its citizens and everything that goes on.
Thank you, Mr. Ivan. I needed that in under ten minutes. Anybody else from the public wishing to address the council this evening? Seeing none, I'm gonna move into item number two. I'm gonna take this in four separate votes or motions. To A, I'll entertain a motion to accept the public hearing meeting minutes from May second, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you, Mr. Manichia. Second, it's Councilwoman Hona. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. To B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from May second, two thousand and twenty-two. You, Councilman Manichia, second by Councilman Waldron. Questions on these minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item two C, I'll entertain a motion to accept the joint meeting minutes with the Board of Public Safety on May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you, Councilwoman Hona.
Second.
Second by Councilman Manichia. Questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? For the record, Councilman Kevin Arrow abstains. And item two D, I'll entertain a motion to accept the special budget meeting minutes from May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second, Councilman Waldron, second by Councilman Manichia. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And an abstention for the record would be Councilman Kevin Arrow. All right, going into item three, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the Personnel Director to enter into an MOU between the city and Police Union Local four-four-two regarding the use of drug recognition experts as per Connecticut general statutes, Public Act twenty-one dash one, section one nineteen.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
And second by Councilman Manichia. And as we heard during public comment, a couple of questions on what these are. And I know, Chief, in your budget presentations, you've talked about the need for these statutorily. Do you want to just a little bit about it?
The Drug Recognition Expert is a program that has been enacted to combat people that are driving under the influence of narcotics or drugs, specifically drug driving is what it is. And officers have to be trained. It's an extensive training that they have to go through in a, in a variety of steps. The first step is the A-Ride training, which all of our recruits are currently being certified in. A-Ride is advanced, it's an advanced road, roadside field sobriety test that includes those operators that are driving under the influence of marijuana. As you know, right now, the only way to combat drug, drunk driving is through blood alcohol content. We have the technology that's available now to do BACs for people who are driving under the influence of alcohol. Unfortunately, at this point, we don't have the technology to test individuals for operating under the influence of marijuana or any type of drug. In that, what I mean by that is, is that we don't have the, the, the technical, like a, like an intoxicilizer type situation that we have for BACs. So what we're doing now is, is there's a training program that's out there that's called, where an officer becomes certified as a drug recognition expert. He has the ability now to feel, to, to test individuals who are suspected of driving under the influence of marijuana or any other type of narcotic, which a regular intoxicimeter will not pick up. I do know that there is technology that's on the horizon to test people who have levels of THC within their saliva, so that, that there is, that is technology that is coming. So right now, the, because of the legalization of marijuana that's been passed in the state of Connecticut, the state has mandated that police departments throughout the state have numbers of certified drug recognition experts. It's based on a formula. It's based on population. Torrington's required DRE is about three to five DRE experts. These officers, once they're selected to go to, the training is generally in Arizona. It's about a two-week training program that's, can be somewhat expensive. These are all unfunded mandates that have been placed upon the city and upon the departments. Currently, recently, the, the state just passed a statute now where anybody that's involved in a serious motor vehicle accident or a fatality, a drug recognition expert is required to be on scene if there's probable cause to believe that the operator or the individual who caused such accident is operating under the influence of a marijuana or alcohol, a drug recognition, a drug recognition expert has to be contacted. What we voted, what, what the vote is on for tonight is that, per our union contract, myself and the, as well as the Personnel Director, discussed with the Union President, the, the methodology for calling in drug recognition experts to scenes while he's off duty. So there, it, it's basically an operational procedural issue where in the event we have a fatal accident or a serious motor vehicle accident, we will contact our drug recognition expert. Torrington has one drug recognition expert right now. That's the individual that we will contact first. If he's not available, then we will, we will reach out to outside agencies who have drug recognition experts. Troop B has one. We don't, I don't believe Winston has one. So we do have the ability to pull DREs from other agencies to come and assist us. But per our contract, per the union contract, we will deal with our, our officer first and then move on. That's what this is about.
Thank you, Chief. Questions? Councilman Manichia.
Chief, is the goal to try and have one per shift?
That, that would be the goal. That would be nice. Now, again, the, the, the formula for DREs is a minimum standard for, for departments. We would obviously like to have as many as we possibly can. Obviously, that will be a cost savings measure down the road. But my goal is to get DREs assigned to our accident investigation team so that when we do go out to investigate serious motor vehicle accidents or fatalities, we'll have DREs that will be responding as part of that, as part of that team.
Thank you.
Thank you for your explanation. So I was trying to follow all of it. That was very helpful. I appreciate it. And so we understand that it's the law, so we have to do it. But I'm curious. So it's just for fatal or serious injuries in an accident. Do you have any idea, like, how many occasions was that last year? Do you have any new, I know you won't be knowing exactly, but.
I, I, I don't have the statistics, but we did have five or six fatal motor vehicle accidents last year. It was kind of a significant number of accidents, which was on the increase. We're not, we're not, we're noticing that our motor vehicle accidents are on the increase and the severity of these accidents are also increasing. There are a lot more injuries as a result of these accidents. So I would anticipate there to be an increase. Again, we, we can only guess at that, but as we look at the trends, you know, it ebbs and flows. But with summertime coming, generally speaking, our motor vehicle accidents do increase as far as fatalities are concerned. Obviously, in the wintertime, our accidents increase because of slippery road conditions. But there is, you know, and again, this is not just a Torrington problem. This is a statewide program. It's a nationwide problem. So.
So, but if we're thinking five or six was a, a significant number, then we're not talking about one of the, or, you know, I'm trying to kind of gauge how much we're talking about an overtime cost. So it seems like it's.
It's sporadic, but.
Yeah, it's sporadic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Councilman Kevin.
Well, what do we, um, again, Chief? So if, if there's an accident within Torrington, right, in Torrington batteries, and you have to call a DRE. Is that what it's called? A DRE, okay. We have, how many, at this point, we have?
We have one.
We have only one. So. I mean, yeah, again, it, it's, it's mitigating the costs of this thing, which it seems to me, especially in light of the fact that if the city moves, which it looks like we are to, you know, again, not only direct to, to sell pot marijuana within Torrington, this could become significantly higher, right? The fact that we have drug-related accidents?
It could be, yes. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's the concern of law enforcement with the legalization of marijuana is the increase in those individuals that are operating under the influence of drugs now.
I assume it's not coincidental that this is coming to us at this point in time with what the state is wanting, legalizing marijuana and the sale of marijuana within districts, no?
No, I, the, the, the DRE, our DRE, the DRE program actually started well before Connecticut decided to legalize marijuana. I mean, it more, it came on, on the heels of when medical marijuana was introduced into the state. So the DRE program was a program that started a few years ago, now four or five years ago. That's when that, that came. And now, as a result of the, of the change in statute, the, the DRE program is becoming on the forefront of attempting to combat those individuals who are operating under the influence of marijuana.
Right. So I mean, I understand, I think we all understand the need to do this. It's class containment. I mean, how long does it take to, would you be administering the test just for the driver in these situations?
Yeah, generally, the, the individual that we would determine to be at fault for the accident would be operator of the, of the vehicle that may have caused the accident, either, either, and, and either case, either the, the, the victim vehicle or the suspect vehicle, for lack of better terms, or, you know, the, the vehicle that's responsible for the accident.
Okay. So if an officer's called at ten PM at night, there's an accident, boom, 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 how long does it take to administer the test approximately? What's that?
The D, well, the, again, there, there's, there's a couple of different steps. The first step is the A, is, is our officers are becoming certified. It's becoming, it, it's becoming a standard that all new recruits in the academy are being tested for, are being trained to be A-Ride certified, which is a, the first step in becoming a DRE. These A-Ride officers have advanced, have training to administer advanced standardized field, I get this, it's tongue, tongue twister. Advanced standard field sobriety training or standard tests is, is what it is. I, STFDS is, is, I could say.
That test is required.
Correct. So, so in other words, if, if there's an individual that's, that you suspect is being operating under the influence of alcohol, you conduct fields, standardized field sobriety test there. There we go. I just said it. So, and, and, and this individual now, an A-Ride certified officer, has the ability to take regular standardized field sobriety test to the next level to, to attempt to identify whether or not this individual is operating under the influence of marijuana. If, if that, if, if that officer determines that, it's at this point, we contact the, the DRE, the drug recognition expert, who will now respond to the scene, administer a completely different set of tests and interview questions to determine whether or not this individual is operating under this influence of marijuana.
Yeah. So again, Mike, I'm just trying to think again, just operationally, real world. So if, if there's an accident nine-thirty at night, that process is what, forty-five minutes to get that, that officer down to now administer those tests? He's on the clock for four hours, right?
Correct.
He administers the test, that takes what, half an hour?
No, but these tests are generally taken anywhere from two to six hours.
Oh, my God.
Because it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a process where the individual is taken to the police department and the DRE begins to administer a series of questions and answers and different tests. And it's, it's not a, it's not a quick one and you're done type of situation. It's a very lengthy process.
Okay, okay. So you're now looking at a situation where an officer is called, administered the test, he goes home, starts watching the game again, and then an hour later, there's another accident. So he's on for four hours and then four hours again, overtime and overtime. It's, it's not, it's not accumulating in that way. I mean, when you get called to the scene of an accident, you're burning at least four hours to, to deal with that one problem.
Correct. The contract allows for, you know, when officers are called off duty into an incident, whether it be the AIT team, the SRT, the SRT team, or any other type of situation, they get a minimum of four hours. There's other language in the contract that dictates the amount of hours that they get. This is just so that when we, when we have a, a situation, we call our DRE in on a, when he's off duty, he will get compensated for it.
Okay, okay, okay. So it's a much more involved process than alcohol.
Correct.
Okay, I did not appreciate that. Okay.
Yep.
I get that. And again, you're, you're trying to train up people. So to Mr. Messias' point, Manichia's point, you'll have, you'll have staff available twenty-four, seven at some point in the, within the year, maybe?
That is our plan. The, the issue is getting it now. Unfortunately, you've got, you know, you've got several, you've got numerous police departments that are not trying to get most, a lot of their officers DRE certified. There's only certain amount of, of seats that are available for this program. The state post, uh, post, which is our Training Council, is working on getting a DRE program to come to the state of Connecticut, where we're going to be able to take care of Connecticut Police Departments. But right now, as it stands, I believe there's, there's two locations and one is in Arizona, which is our, where our, where most of our DRE officers are trained.
Okay. So we all use this as a short, this is a short-term fix.
Yes, yeah.
To get us to where we have more staffing and we don't have to deal.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes.
Well said.
Other questions for the chief?
Yeah, just one comment and then one question. It would make sense to me that four hours, you kind of, you're pulling somebody out of wherever they are with their family or their lives. So if it's forty-five minutes to get paid, probably too, not too many people would be like, gonna come in. And that kind of makes it worthwhile to them, I would think, to get four hours of overtime to come. But when you talked about how accidents are increasing, slightly off topic, but I'm a little bit interested. Are you seeing, is it distracted driving or seeing the accidents are coming, because people are on their cell phones? Can you tell like what a pattern is?
It's, it's, it's a combination of all those, all of the above, distracted driving, speeding, under the influence of, of the marijuana now and, and alcohol. You know, there, there's not one specific incident that's causing a number of accidents. It's, it's, it's an all of the above situation. Each accident is different.
I was just curious if you were seeing a trend. Thank you.
Excuse me, from the Zoom room, it looks like David Oliver has a question. How many drivers are detained for operating under the point zero eight standard like VAC in the past? I'm not.
Yeah. You know, I mean, I can, I can chime in, Mayor, if you'd like. I'm just curious, how many people have been detained for driving under the influence of marijuana? I'm just now learning, based on what just happened in that conversation, that it's a longer, an elongated process to determine someone's level of intoxication. But I'm just curious, now that, now that marijuana is becoming legal, are we seeing a, an uptick in arrests for that, for that offense?
Not, not necessarily at this point. Are we seeing an uptick? Again, each DWI, driving while intoxicated, whether it be alcohol or marijuana, has been kind of flat across the board. Although, as I spoke to Councilman Hona, we are seeing an increase in all of these things, but, you know, I, I don't, Councilman, to be very honest with you, I don't have those statistics. I could probably get those for you, but realistically, I, I don't know what, what the, the level is. If an individual is showing signs of being intoxicated at the scene, he may be a point zero zero zero. And there may be other means or reasons why he's under the influence. Or there, it could be a medical condition. It could be, it could be drugs. At that point, the officer has to continue his investigation and use alternate tests to identify what this individual may be under the influence of.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Baldwin? Councilwoman Hona?
I do not have a question for Chief Baldwin. I have a question for the Personnel Director.
Can I sit down?
Okay. So to Jamie, there's a question.
I was just curious if you, in, were you part of your party to bargaining this MOU? Were you, were you part of the negotiating of it? Because I'm just kind of curious if this MOU sort of mirrors what other cities are doing with their officers that are trained to do this.
I was not, and I, I'm not aware of what other towns are doing, although I would suspect, knowing what I do know about Torrington and other contracts that I've looked at, that is not uncommon for this type of overtime, you know, block overtime for calling back. To your point, Councilwoman Hona, as you had mentioned, you know, to get someone to come back in, they're not incentivized to do it for forty-five minutes. So I don't have any information on other towns, although it would not surprise me if others are doing the same.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Manichia.
And I would imagine, Chief, that if we had to call someone in from another department, they would charge us probably more than what we could do it for in-house anyways.
Correct. Not necessarily. Other department, we, we have agreements with our agencies, law enforcement officials assist other departments, other towns, other cities. If we have the resources available to them, if we were to call the state to come in, which would be part of the pro, this process, if our DRE wasn't available, they would come in, they wouldn't be charging us for, for us. But, but if an officer from another town was off duty and was available, that town would be paying him overtime to come and assist us with our testing process here at the city. Same token would be that if, you know, if Winston or even if Troop B called us and asked us to, ask for our assistance to help them with a individual who's under the influence and our DRE was working here, regular shift, we would let him go and assist those agencies. We don't charge them. They don't charge us. It's a reciprocal agreement between a department. It's mutual aid, for lack of better terms. It's like what, what the fire department does. If they need the fire department, the fire department will be more than willing to assist our community and our, and, and those towns within our, that border our, our community. Yes, sir.
Yeah, just a follow-up question. Is this, is this testing specifically for cannabis or does it catch other?
It's, 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 it's aimed towards cannabis, but it's also part, it, 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 it will catch other, other types of illegal activities. Not, not everything, but, but it, but.
It's broader based than just cannabis. Okay.
Yes.
Final call for questions. Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. And thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
All right, moving on to item four. I'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on Monday, June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six-thirty PM to review, discuss, and solicit citizen input regarding proposals for participation in the two thousand and twenty-two Neighborhood Assistance Act program. So, thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow.
Second.
Second by Councilman Manichia. Questions? Second by Councilman Minichia. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to schedule a subsequent public hearing by city council here and acting as a water pollution control authority on June sixth, twenty twenty two to set the sewer user fee for the period from July one, twenty twenty two, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. I'll continue reading for residential users an amount not less than three hundred and two dollars and not more than three hundred and seventy eight dollars per dwelling unit. And for all other users, an amount not less than three hundred and two, not more than three hundred and seventy eight per sixty five thousand gallons of volume flow. This is not a commitment to these numbers. It's a commitment to scheduling the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hona, seconded by Councilman Minichia. Are there questions?
Yes.
Yes.
How do we how are we defining all other users? Does that mean out of district users as well?
No, no, that is, those are the industrial users. I know Ed is here. He can answer the question.
That's for commercial accounts.
Commercial?
Yes.
Okay.
Industrial.
Yeah, other communities are paying the same as this again. They'll be charged the same. Litchfield, for instance.
They'll be charged according to our our inter municipal agreements with them.
Okay. Okay.
We don't set the rates for them.
Yeah, well, I was very involved with a couple of years ago.
And still, and that's something we do have to get back out. Councilman Cavenero is correct. We have not updated those inter municipal agreements. But it is something that we need to get back to.
Can we get back? What is this for? June?
So this is June sixth. These are just for the local.
As long as for this meeting, can we make sure we hit that? There are plenty of people who, after the Wateridge Lake business, are attuned to the fact that there's a big discrepancy of disagreement on how we are billing out for our sewage fees. So if we can make make sure that when people come here, they know that this is specifically just Torrington we talked about.
Yes.
In the messaging of what this will be or what this hearing will be for.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I'm I'm looking at Council at Corporation Council. I wasn't sure if there's anything that you can update us on contract negotiations on those.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
There there are agreements, draft agreements that we've been working on. Myself and Ray Ju and Ed, and those agreements are in in the hands of the parties. And we've gone over a number of iterations of them. We just haven't come to a conclusion yet, but we do. I I do want you to know that we are working on that. Ray, I see is on the call here and he can. I'm sure he can confirm that.
Thank you.
Mayor question?
Yes.
Will that go? Will that go through the order? I mean, at one point, we went through ordinance for these external usage fees. I'm just I'm just asking, is that or is that going to just come directly?
To the full board. Yes.
It'll come back. It'll come to the to the board. It wouldn't be an ordinance right now, but it would go. It's just a redoing and an existing agreement with some revisions. And so it'll come back to the council.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions?
I don't I don't foresee that agreement.
Happening before June sixth.
Finished before this budget.
No, 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 no. And I'm not at all requesting that.
Yeah.
I just want to be really clear that what we're discussing in this has nothing to do with the discussion that went out like two years ago and that whole thing. This is just specifically for Torrington, our users. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Final call for questions on this motion? Seeing and hearing none?
No.
Okay, good. Then I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion on recommendation of the ordinance committee to schedule a subsequent public hearing on June sixth, twenty twenty two. Councilman Kevin Arrow, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Minichia. Are there questions on this? And again, it's just to schedule the public hearing. We will be very busy on the sixth. Hearing no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven. On recommendation of the ordinance committee, I'll entertain a motion to schedule a subsequent public hearing on June sixth, twenty twenty two. This is on the out of state motor vehicle ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I think that was Councilman Oliver and seconded by Councilman Kevin Arrow. Questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution number one four three dash two two nine for a five hundred thousand dollar urban act bond for one hundred Franklin Street, Torrington, Riverfront, Penrose.
So.
Thank you, Councilman Minichia.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Oliver. And this, the council will recall that shortly before the legislative session broke, there was a bond commission meeting. This is under the Urban Act. A bond commission award that will flow through the city of Torrington to Penrose. And Rista is here if we have questions.
For, are we the questions?
Yeah, absolutely. Rista, if you don't mind.
Okay. The favorite councilman has a question. What specifically is this? How is this money defined? It's happening dollars for what use?
It will be to purchase materials. We've identified materials up to five hundred thousand dollars. I think the trash shoots masonry and there's one other line item that I'll be covering.
Materials?
Materials.
What kind of materials?
The trash shoots, masonry, and then there was one other. I don't have it off the top of my head.
So I'm curious, why? Why is the city or why is this? Why are taxpayers paying for materials for a private corporation building?
So, do you want to?
Yeah, I was gonna say, so just like our high school building committee experienced during the pandemic, the cost escalation of supplies, the Penrose Riverfront Construction Project experienced the same thing. Supply chain delays, cost escalation. So at through the state legislature, Governor Lamont's bond commission, an application was put in for a five hundred thousand dollar grant award to fill that gap. Actually, the request was for eight hundred thousand dollars. The bond commission agreed to do five hundred of that. And, yeah.
Okay, I understand that, Mayor, and I'm going to be voting against this on the basic principle that there's a big, big difference between a public high school project and a for profit apartment building complex. And my mind, okay, and who should be paying for what? And I don't care if the state makes this money available, you know, if the state made, you know, tons of ice cream available for schoolchildren, I wouldn't say, well, let's take it and give it to the school children. Okay? It's just not good governance. I, you know, I I've been at odds with the council and the mayor, certainly over Penrose from the beginning. I continue to be, this is a for profit enterprise that we have given all kinds of consideration in terms of tax abatements, in terms of cleaning up the ground fields, additional funding. And now, okay, like any private, they have additional building costs related to COVID. Oh, what a shock. You know, why should taxpayers of Connecticut have to underwrite that? Why? Why are we on the hook? It's a for profit company. I'm sorry, but COVID, that's the price of doing business. These kinds of public-private partnerships drive me nuts because at the end of the day, the risk all gets pushed onto taxpayers, whether it's through local taxes, state taxes, and, you know, we also know through the federal tax granting programs. And I think it has to start, and I just want to be. Again, I there in my mind, there's just a very big distinction to be made between a public high school project and a for profit apartment building complex that is also going to be massively taxpayer subsidized, massively taxpayer abated. And now they want state through our, when people grant money is not free money. Right? States, local governments, federal government, they don't make anything. They don't make money. People do. We tax the hell out of them. And then we redistribute it for what's necessary. This is they should be paid for. Penrose should be paying for these cost overruns. They need to figure it out. And maybe that does hit their profit. You know, profit margins the first couple of years. Tough luck. That's life. Don't keep pushing the risk off onto the local governments and local pat and state taxpayers. So I'm going to vote against this on that basis, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I have a question, actually. Um, can you just in a very short version? Explain, I I'm guessing that this happens every bond cycle of the state. There's urban.
Every month.
Every month.
Commission needs every month.
No, but the specific type bonds, urban action bonds.
Urban Act, every month.
Okay, every month.
Yes.
All right. So so every month, they're looking at applications. These applications are joint, private and and government. So like localities and a private like like our situation with Penrose apply for them together.
Yes.
Am I understanding this correctly?
You are.
All right. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know the process.
Yeah, I I share Councilman Cavenero's concerns that making the comparison between a school that we own and a private entity that's building an apartment complex. And I would think as part of their business model would know that there's going to be overruns and be prepared for that. But were there any other requirements that we placed on Penrose that then made it more difficult for them to operate, which made them need to apply for this grant? Like, was there any changes on the city side to what we were asking them to do that would lead them to have any increases in these costs?
No, we know. There was no additional requirements except for the costs for the requirements and the one that they noted, the cost for undergrounding, the utilities skyrocketed. And that is something that that was part of their application, but it is something an offsite improvement that they're doing, which is one of the reasons. One of the cost escalations was there, and there was a couple other lumber being one.
So they always knew they had to do the underground utilities, just the cost for it increased?
Correct.
Yes. And just to clarify, it was not comparing Penrose to the high school. It was just our experience as we know it is cost escalation when you start a project prior to a pandemic. And here we are, two years, two and a half years post. I certainly was not trying to.
Yeah, I get that, Mayor. I have heard from other unnamed sources make that argument to me. Well, just like the high school applied for twenty million additional dollars, and I have the same argument as I had before. Apples and oranges.
Yes.
I just wanted, you know, I think that a couple of things. So this is a grant to the city. The city is loaning this to Penrose with zero percent interest over thirty five years. But what that does is it puts a mortgage on the property or lien on the property, requiring that they continue to do what they say they're going to do. So they're not going to sell it. And you know, and if any of those things do happen or it becomes not affordable or they change their affordability rates, we get paid back that in shorter period of time. So it is another level of protection. Even though it's a grant to the city, it is another assurance that they'll do what they continue to say that they're going to do. And the and the problem is, we're already into construction. So what would happen is the you start to value engineer things, you start to cut things out of the project to make that budget happen. So we want to make sure that we're going to still get that high quality level that they had promised and not start to, you know, value engineer the project. So we were trying to help cover that gap for for that reason.
And I would, if I can respond.
Please.
I would argue that that was the city's failure to get commitments to the level of to the quality levels before we gave them the tax abatements that we did, the massive tax abatements that we did. We should have held them to certain standards of building, to cert to quality standards that we could then enforce. It's a for profit company. And once again, they are trying to have it both ways. They want to reap, they want to take the profit, but they want the risk and the overruns to land on taxpayers. And when everybody pays their state tax every year and complains about how high state taxes are in Connecticut, this is one of the reasons we, you know, and and again, it's not, it's not, and it's not either a party. It's it's just the way we do business and it's wrong. And it's led us to this place where we just, you know, throw around grants and and grant money as if it's manna from heaven and it is not. And I think we need to be disciplined in our approach. And just because they offer this to us, we should push back and say, no, this is their responsibility. They and they are also responsible for maintaining their standards. If that hits you in your first three or four year profit mi- margins, so be it. That's your risk that you took when you asked for your tax abatement for Torrington taxpayers to subsidize you. So I'm just, again, standing on, we need to be more disciplined in every municipality, not just Torrington. It's god awful backwards the way we do these things in the state.
Other questions for Rista or to the motion? Hearing none, I'm going to call the motion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, so I have three in favor, two opposed. Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution number one four three dash two three zero for a one million dollar brownfield remediation for two forty five East Elm Street. This is Vinnie's Restaurants.
So moved.
Councilman Kevin Arrow.
Second.
And Councilman Minichia. And questions on this motion?
Is this a similar situation?
Not really. You mean to to the Penrose?
No.
I'm sorry.
Well, well, in in the way it works.
So this is a brownfields remediation grant through D E C D Brownfields Department Division. These funds are made available to me, a private developer of his property. They will be utilized for brownfield remediation. However, he is also required to provide matching funds to make sure that the brown that the work is completed. And one of the things that I like, what the state is doing differently now is they are actually looking for a security interest in the property or against assets that the property owner has. And this is their way to ensure that the project actually happens and it happens within a timely manner. So there's a security interest. Once the project is completed, they will release that security interest. And this is the first time in all of the brownfield grants, grant funds that we've, yes, yes.
Is it a matching remediation? I mean, do they?
How much do they have to come up? It's a match. It's they leverage the remediation funds for a development cost. So in this case, they have a million dollars worth of remediation to do. But once they do that million dollars worth of remediation, they're going to invest another, I think, one point two million dollars to make a banquet facility. There's no that the state doesn't require a fifty percent match or one to one match, but they want to make sure their funds are leveraging a development, not just cleaning up a site that's going to sit there.
No, no, the logic makes sense. Again, this is a for profit company that's actually putting up a big chunk of its own money.
Correct.
To optimize the state's investment and therefore develop that property. This, to me, is smart governance. This Penrose stuff is not. It's the reverse. Anyway, just out of curiosity, the fact that they, let me think here. No, I guess that doesn't. Do do other banquet facilities, are they going to? Does this present any issues for for them coming for us to get some consideration to help them build? Not really, right?
Uh, no. Any property owner that has that owns a brownfield or contaminated piece of property. And we try our best to work with them to access those grant funds as to become available. This was one of the applications we actually tried twice. The same time we received this award, we also received the award for the Torrington Standard Plant on North Elm and North Street. Same deal. You know, the state will put in two million. The developer is required to put up their own money to make sure that the the project is completed. And D E C D holds them accountable to that by looking for security interest in the property.
And and just point of information, Mayor, the remediation is happening on onsite where they currently are?
Yes.
So were there existing now? Was was there remedied? How did that get remedied?
Yeah, so so they, you know, these I want to give a lot of credit to this property owner. I think that they're a great city partners in business. They bought this property. They did the remediation and they built out that whole restaurant back half to get to get open without any assistance from the city. They.
They did their own remediation.
Did their own remediation and they did, you know, all the development of that. And they didn't, and they could have qualified to come in for a tax abatement at that time. But they said, you know, well, we've been so profitable, we don't need to yet. We might in the future, but right now we can make this work. So they didn't come in for tax abatement. They didn't ask us for brownfield grant. They did all their development of their restaurant. But there's a million dollars worth of work and two million dollars to redevelop it. And you they just can't make the R R I work with a three million dollar project. So it's kind of stuck. So that's why we've been working with them. So the remediation is mostly in the building. So the remediation is mostly in the building. The floor of the building is where they had the equipment, and they have to rip up that whole first floor, do the remediation, there's some outside work to do, and then hazardous material abatement within the building. That's very typical of a building that size. So once that work is done, they have committed to come in and build, put a new commercial kitchen downstairs and build a banquet facility on that first floor.
I have no, just-
Yeah, so that's, that's where they, they stand with that.
And I would add that the area where the restaurant is was primarily office space.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, where, where the real, you know, the real dirty manufacturing was happening is down below, and that, they can't, they can't expand anymore until they get that fixed.
They've been in Torington a long time. They, you know, they are the, the, you know, the, right? The typical, the stereotypical successful immigrant story, and I'm more than happy to support them in this effort, so.
Other questions on the motion or for Rista? I'll call this motion all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Thank you, Rista. Item 10, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Torington High School Building Committee to approve the services of Verstig Associates of Torington, Connecticut to be the consultant for Torington's independent code review for the middle school, high school, central office administration construction project. Uh, the lump sum cost of the contract is $46,500.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
One second by Councilwoman Hona. Um, and Mr., um, Aaron is here this evening if we have questions. Uh, we do have, um, building committee approval, Board of Education approval. Okay, then let's make this motion contingent on Board of Education's approval.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, Councilman Waldron, it's okay to amend your motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, good, and Councilwoman Hona, yes, okay, good. Other questions or comments?
As you know, lives in town, he's been a, uh, state trooper for 25 years, and he's probably the only one in the state that does this. Uh, the fire marshal is very happy with Joe doing it, so, uh, we are happy for Joe doing it. And then probably in two weeks, we'll, uh, the city also would be happy because there'll be a structural review person coming in to do that. So, uh, we're working together with the city, and we appreciate everything the city has done for us.
Thank you. I was just going to say, this takes the pressure, a little bit of the pressure off of our building officials.
Especially, uh, the mayor and the treasurer who, who gives us money in advance, which keeps us going, and then we just got 2.1 million dollars back from the state. Heartache, but it took long, and then we're going to ask for some more money, uh, in June. So we appreciate everything the city has done for the building committee.
Thank you, Mr. Aaron. Questions? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item 11, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council acting herein as a water pollution control authority to approve the following payments to Traver IDC Inc. of Waterbury from, from Fund 491 WPCA Infrastructure. The invoice number S31544 and the sum of $5,969.12. Invoice S31551 and the amount of $8,451. Invoice S31552 and the sum of $7,938. And S31550 and the amount of $5,934.56.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia, and Councilwoman Hona. Uh, questions on the motion?
Yes, I do hear.
Yes.
What does this mean, actually, work on VFD sludge work? And why is it broken up into parallel payments?
It's the way the invoices were written. This is part of the project down there. That was, these VFDs for these sledge blowers were, was kind of overlooked. It wasn't put into project.
VFD?
So it, it controls the speed of the motor and the pump.
Okay.
Of pump, the blowers in this case.
I got it.
So, so they got operational, it was kind of an emergency because these were left out, and they were running at 100%, which, you, so it was an energy draw. On top, we were going to just wear out that equipment if we didn't get them, this Traver to come put these VFDs in. So.
It says, has work done, does that mean they repaired? Or will we be seeing more of these, will there be continuing work done, work done, work done on these sludge mixers?
Not on this, not, not, on, on this piece of equipment?
Yeah, I'm just wondering why we have sort of the rolling, uh, I mean, sludge mixer number one has 5,900 bucks, and then you have 8,400 bucks. There's no dates of when this work done on, work on, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it looks like this, this, whatever these sludge mixers are, they keep breaking, is what it looks like.
No, these are, these VFDs are new. These are brand new. Um, I could get you those dates if you'd like.
Well, actually, they're in the council package. All the invoices are in the package.
Yeah, no, 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 that's, I'm just, okay. Whatever this work is, as opposed to, usually when I see something like this, it's, you know, repair work done on or something, it's like, okay, work was done, it's fixed, it's now going. This sort of feels like this is an ongoing-
No, this is, this, this project right here, this is complete.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Fine, we're good, thank you.
Okay, sorry for that.
No, no, it's fine.
Other questions? I'll call the motion all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council acting herein as a water pollution control authority to approve the following payments from Fund 490 Sanitary Sewer Capital Improvement to Yield Industries, invoice 1267 and the sum of $7,490. And invoice number 20373 to Wright Pierce Engineering, $2,731.07. Thank you, Councilman Manichia. And seconded by Councilman Oliver. Uh, questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ARPA-funded Community Grants Advisory Committee's recommendations for grant application scoring matrix.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Hona. All right, questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, I'll entertain a motion to release the Sewer Use Leans and Corporation Council's memo, dated May 16, 2022.
So moved.
Seconded by Councilwoman Waldron. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendations of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated in the list dated May 16, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Waldron, seconded by Councilman Manichia. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize a sewer use or refunds indicated in the list dated May 16, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Hona. Questions on the motion? Or the list? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Manichia, seconded by Councilwoman Hona. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item, uh, oh, excuse me. To our department heads in the room, um, anything else to add this evening, Ed? Anything, Chief Walden?
Just wanted to let the council and the city know that, uh, this week marks Police Memorial Week. Um, we will be, um, on, uh, May 19, Thursday, uh, we will be having, um, a memorial service at the Post Academy at the police state, at the Police Memorial Service where we will be honoring, uh, Torington's own Anthony Barberi, who was a Torington police officer who died in the line of duty back on, uh, February 20th, 1950. Um, so we will be, um, honoring that, if you can keep, uh, to honor all the enforcement officials who have died in the line of duty. Also, just to give you some city news, police department news, uh, we experienced today a significant number of vandalism to vehicles, um, throughout the city. Our department is currently investigating that. Also, um, unfortunately, some vandalism to the senior center, we're investigating that as well. Uh, we're just asking our, our, our citizens in this, in the city, uh, to not, if they see something suspicious, to call us and to, uh, not wait and immediately call the police department so that we can respond appropriately. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief. Rista, anything else this evening? Anything from the city clerk's office? Uh, to the Zoom room? Corporation Council, anything this evening?
Uh, nothing further, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. And Ray Drew is on the line. Anything this evening, Ray?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Am I missing anything? Anybody? All right. Item 18, then I'll, uh, entertain a motion to consider business by mayors and members.
So moved.
Second.
Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman, uh, Kevin Arrow. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, to the, uh, to the screen, anything this evening, Councilman Oliver?
Uh, no, thank you, Mayor.
Anything, Councilman Waldron?
No, I just have to go outside and see what, uh, lightning hit in my backyard, so. It's my neighbor's yard, it, like, we could see a tree with the bark off it, so I don't know what happened. Fun stuff. Hopefully my TV recovers.
At least we didn't get the tornado.
Hopefully not, you'll get a better one.
I might, I might. But, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr.
Councilwoman Hona, thank you, Councilman Manichia.
No, thank you.
Councilman Kevin Arrow.
I do, um, I, I just want to, uh, make, or, how do I go about this? A, a downtown store owner. I, I think, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be mentioning his name or not. Anyway, contacted me about three or four, yeah, probably about four weeks ago now, about wanting to get permission to use his, his place to host, uh, some live music. And he was told by the city, by, or, I guess, he had gone through appropriate channels, and the fire marshal told him that, no, you're not the code. We know who this is, right?
We do.
Okay, so, yeah, so it's this guy, and he asked me to follow up with the council to try to get, he wants an exception, and what I advise him, and I'm sure what other people advise him is the, and he was using his, let me, let me back up on, I'm chopping this all up. His argument was that other downtown, uh, buildings are not in compliance with our code, and they host different kinds of public gatherings and are allowed to do it. Why is he not? In my comment to him, and he, and I said I would follow up the council, is unfortunately, sir, my concern is not that I will not actively help you get an exception, rather, I will push it to our mayor and our council and appropriate people to find out why these other downtown, um, retail outlets that are hosting these events are not up to code themselves. I said, um, there's reasons for these codes, there's, there's safety reasons, and they need to be in place. So I'm like, I'm just advising the mayor, I'm, I guess since you know this person, you know the arguments. Is he correct in that other buildings downtown are not up to code?
No, and I'm looking at Rista as, you know, as you're asking these questions, no, he is not.
Okay.
Um, and I will tell you that we have offered numerous times, more than numerous times, you know, every couple of weeks, why don't you come in and sit down with us, and we can go through what you would like to do and what you need to do to be able to do that. But, uh, he, he does seem to be under the impression that other buildings and businesses are doing the same thing.
I told him-
There's a fire code, life safety issue in the building that must be corrected before a some, yes.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yes, before an assembly use could be approved. And if there's anything that you wanted to add to that, Rista? Yeah.
We, for my sake, I don't, we don't need to worry about this.
But we have offered, and we've offered even as recently as, now, keep in mind, this is also a property owner that, um, this council approved a facade improvement, uh, grant to him. You know, so that we can assist him to get his building closer to being in compliance with, was, uh, it was his furnace, right? It was HVAC. So this is a property owner that we do, we keep offering, you know, a, a handout, not a handout, a leg up. Come in, meet with us, let's sit down with all of the code enforcers, the building department, our land use office, and the, um, fire marshal. Okay.
He's undercapitalized and, you know, and, you know.
And we did help him with that, we did help him with that undercapitalization, and I just want to remind the council. And that was one of our largest facade improvement awards.
Interesting. All right, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, absolutely. So, um, I really didn't want, I don't need to, um, add anything, just a reminder that we are in budget season. Uh, I believe we do have a joint meeting, uh, with the Board of Finance next week so that we could do the, our, um, approved department budgets, uh, presentation to the Board of Finance. Um, but at this time, I just wanted to, um, ask if we could all observe a moment of silence for the passing of former Mayor Delia Dunne. Thank you all, I appreciate your intelligence. By the way, her funeral services are Thursday morning, that's May 19th. Uh, there'll be a church service at 11 o'clock, uh, and a jubilee visiting hours with the family between 9:00 and 10:30 at Failings Funeral Home. We'll move into item 19. I'll open, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public for comment on agenda items only.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. Seconded by Councilwoman Hona. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone from the public on agenda items only, please? On agenda? Okay.
I just want to make a comment to the city for the mayor, uh, filling in the, uh, fire chief and, uh, police department, uh, I think they do a good job. I want to just compliment both. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for public comment. There being none and no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia and Councilwoman Waldron, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you all.